Okay, good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this 11th day of January 2021. I want to welcome everybody back. Of course, this is our first meeting of the new year, and we'll jump right into it. Welcome our guests and jump right into tonight's agenda. The first item on the agenda would be the consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on December 14 of 2020.
No further reading.
Okay. Second. We have a first and a second. Council, that motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to the meetings minutes that were presented to you and your partners? Okay, hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Public comment, hearing anybody sign up? Okay, no public comment. Moving right into tonight's agenda, the first item, or actually the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the senior lunch funding January through March of 2021. Council, I've provided each of you at your spot there a rundown of the senior meals program, and you'll see on that spreadsheet you have available that we started, we tentatively started serving meals in March, and we served them all the way through December. You have the breakdown of the expense for March through December, and the total cost of that program was $74,068. 100% of that $74,068 was refunded in our reimbursement that we do with the state, which is through the CARES Act, which is the federal funding that came down to the states for disbursement. Those funds did expire at the end of December, so as you'll remember, at our last meeting in December, it was brought up by Councilman Shaw, agreed to by all of you, that the mayor go away and diligently figure out a way to continue the feeding program and its funding. So what we have is best estimate of the funding, and you can actually see that we took away, we took away the city funding, because now we're going to use a rent, and you kind of noticed those numbers tick maybe a little differently on the arena side, because now we're going to use arena labor for the delivery to the senior center, which previously we'd use city employees. With the extension of the program, the city employees that we were using were coming out of the street department, and with snow plowing and other things here, we could no longer depend on their availability, so we've kind of shifted some resources to make sure that we could get the delivery from here to the senior center. So effective January 5th, the first meal was served again in January, and remember, we serve meals on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. So we picked the program back up. The first meal started again January 5th. They're prepared here and delivered to the senior center, where they actually dispersed the meals through a drive-through underneath that awning. And you see that it's our best estimate, and I think these numbers are pretty solid, that we could continue the program for that three-month period for approximately $23,356. Due to the monies that the city received in the CARES Act reimbursement and funding that we had in our budget for anticipation of COVID-19 situations that might be presented to the city, and would be meeting with the senior center, the senior center right now, actually, like a lot of organizations and operations throughout our footprint of the city, the state, and the nation, they are kind of up against it right now themselves because they exist through fundraisers. They do fundraisers to keep their lights on and do their activities that they do, so on and so forth. So it was mentioned even by Councilman Stedham, he asked me that he noticed that there's not been an active campaign for solicitation on people donating to the food program. So this is what I say, and actually, that's what we agreed we would do at the last council meeting, is that we would solicit donations. In lieu of the funding that we have and the ability that we have to pay for this program at least for the three-month period, and we have received one donation that came as a result of our talking about the solicitation of funding to help us run the program, one donations come in, but after meeting with the senior center and understanding, and if you're reading their articles in the paper at all, they on a regular basis are asking for donations for their ongoing operations now that are no longer supported by their fundraising that they do. And what's their ongoing operations? It would be their existing bills, their insurance, their utilities, the bills that they do maintaining their operations without people. I do believe that, not I do believe, I know that I was informed that now they are too open for business again for rentals. I think they are allowing, per the guidelines of the state and rental, they are now allowing for people, I guess, to rent out the center, and that's another way they generate revenue. But anyway, they were actively soliciting their members and citizens to make donations to them for their business operation. And so what we would have done, jumping in the game, is, you know, then we would have drawn those funds that people are making to help them with their ongoing operations where they can't raise money, it just would have been a competition. So I made the decision to not actively solicit funding away from them. If somebody wants to make a donation to the food program, they can mail a check to the city and we'll use it to offset the expense. But if somebody wants to make a donation to the senior citizens for their operation, I too encourage that, send the money to the senior center so that they can take care of their needs and tell at which time they can open back up and begin their fundraising and bring everything together. So I don't see it a situation at all. With our current funding and budget of revenue against expenses, we can afford the commitment on a quarterly basis, and that's what I'm asking you tonight, it's on the agenda, to approve the funding to continue the senior meal program at the Nicholas County Senior Center, January, February, March for this quarter.
No further reading.
Second. Okay, are there any questions? Okay. Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda would be the approval to increase the 2020 VNO exemption on our VNO tax bill. Okay, council, I've spent a lot of time researching, studying, analyzing, again, back to our reimbursement from CARES Act, the current revenue stream of the city, revenue against expenses, and I come before you tonight as a body asking that we airmark a portion of our CARES Act money, and of course, we have other expenses and other obligations, but I feel totally confident in this move that we airmark $88,219 and return it to our businesses, our partners, the very people that keep the functionality of this city going. I wish we could do more, but we can't, but let me explain to you how I would like to do this. You all have a VNO, City of Somersville, VNO tax return before you, and if you look on there, down there, item number two on this form, we have an exemption. You get $12.50 a quarter or $50 per year. So all business has suffered through the pandemic, but small business, and I mean small business, have really suffered. As a matter of fact, as you all very well know, when this total thing washes out, we as a city have been fortunate because we have picked up some business during the pandemic in our city, and those people are pretty courageous, and I'm glad that they picked our city to do business, but the downside to the pandemic is we're, when everything washes out, we're going to have lost some businesses. So what I'm recommending we do for the 2020 tax return filing is that we increase that $50 to $300. So every business that files taxes in this city will get a $300 tax exemption, which basically works, goes from $1,250 per quarter to $75 per quarter. Now let me tell you how this works, or how it's going to have an impact on our city. First of all, we have a total of 862 active businesses in our city. What I want to spill out in real clear terms is who qualifies for this 300 annual exemption, $75 a quarter exemption? The first thing I want to address is my recommendation that if a business transferred ownership in the 2020 tax year, that we will roll up or roll down this credit to benefit the business. So let me give you an example of what I'm talking about. If a business transferred ownership in the middle of a quarter, the business, the business owner previous would get to roll up and get that $75 in that quarter, and the new business would get to roll down and take the full $75 per quarter tax exemption. Okay? What we're not going to get into is the prorating of you had it so many days, how many days you get this, you get that, no. What we're going to do is roll up or roll down to benefit the business owner. Anybody have any questions about that?
You said or, I think. Don't you mean and?
And, yeah, roll up and roll down, whichever way it benefits. So the guy that sold would get the full quarter, the guy that bought would get the full quarter, if that transaction happens in the middle of a quarter. Okay? And all of this is figured into this estimate that I gave you of $88,219. Okay, so we got a total of 862 businesses. Let me tell you first that 238 businesses do not benefit from this because they're below the threshold already of paying taxes. So with the $50 credit, or $50 exemption they already get, they don't pay any taxes. So that's 238 of the 862 businesses. Now what I want to address is the businesses that I'm recommending tonight that you approve that do not qualify for this exemption. We have 54 active businesses without licenses. I recommend that they do not qualify. There are various reasons that those businesses are in that status, and it very well could be that some of those businesses are out of business, and they just haven't filed the final paperwork to let us know, so therefore, all we know on our end is they're an operation, a functional business, but we're not saying they qualify. And then we do have, so we got 54 businesses that are active in the city that don't have a city business license. If you're not in good standing with the city, you don't get the exemption. Okay? We've got, we've got 79 active businesses that are delinquent on their VNO taxes. They don't qualify for this exemption. And when I say they're delinquent on taxes, that is pre-2020 taxes that they're delinquent on. Okay? We're not looking at, we're getting, I'm going to get to it in a minute, what we're giving everybody for the 2020 taxes to get filed and still qualify for this exemption. So there are 79 active businesses, delinquent on their VNO, they don't qualify. There are 13 active businesses filed but have balances that are due. If they're filed and those balances are on 2020 taxes, they qualify. If those balances due are pre-2020, they don't qualify. And then we have one active business in the city that's right now on a financial arrangement agreement, which means they came in, cut up all their taxes, and they're paying payments on their VNO. That business for their 2020 taxes, their 2020 taxes would qualify because they've made an arrangement, they've got all their forms are filed, all their documents are filed, they're making payments on back taxes. That's somebody that technically is in good standing because they came in, they've taken the step to come in and reconcile, and they're on a payment, and so their 2020 taxes I'm recommending you qualify. We actually have 24 businesses that are inactive but delinquent on taxes, and so they don't qualify for the tax exemption. So we're not going to allow anybody to come in that's delinquent on prior 2020 taxes and try to use this, this increased exemption to benefit them in their past three taxes. Okay? And the other thing, and then I'll open it up for questions, so what are we going to do? What we're asking is, is the drop dead date to qualify for this 2020 tax exemption is you have to have your taxes filed and paid by March 12 of '21, which is the end of this, I mean, not March, February, February, wait, I mean, by close of business, February 12 of '21. And so basically, the whole idea on this is, is that all the taxes get filed, and then we'll issue reimbursement checks to everybody that's in good standing on filed taxes. The only thing I would say, if there is a business owner out there that's up against it in a situation as to it makes no sense, do their hardship to pay us and get paid back, I would ask you to call City Hall. We will handle those on a case-by-case basis. Otherwise, we're looking for everybody to file their taxes, which really, if you go by our ordinance and our tax return, those tax filings are due and to be paid by the last day of January of the new year. So January, last day, which January this year has 31 days. Technically, our form requires you, our current ordinance requires you to have, if you file on an annual basis, or your last quarter to be due, it's due by close of business in January of the next year. Okay? So at this time, I'll open it up for any questions that you have.
Is the business that's on the plane, are they current on the plane?
Yes. Yes. Are there any of those numbers? I mean, is there any, anybody have any questions? I mean, do you, I mean, I'm really looking for, you know, you know, if y'all have, I mean, the one thing that, so that number, 300, I settled on because obviously what we would like to do is do more. But when you look at the big picture, and we've already begun to start the process of putting together our next fiscal year budget, which is due to the state by the end of March, taking all of, you know, the whole big picture's been taken into consideration, where we're at today, where we need to go tomorrow, and of course, the core of, you know, the city's financial picture, and, you know, with, with taking a piece of, which to my knowledge, you know, I just really feel this is something that should be done. I wish it would be done across the entire state, but it's given back the very people that I think, you know, have endured like we have as a city, but, you know, it's, again, it's our partnership with them that allows us to be who we are and do what we do. And, you know, sometimes people might look at, well, $300, but let me tell you, some of these small businesses, that $300 is going to make a difference, I mean, from a standpoint of their total financial picture. I mean, you know how it is, you know, any little bit the government gives you back, you know, the way I look at it, it's their money to start with. Anybody have any questions?
You need a motion or a rap?
Oh, we do.
I'll make a motion if we approve.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
We have several seconds. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, so one more time for the camera, I just want to emphasize that we're still looking for everybody to file their returns. In the event you can't file it with money, call City Hall, they're going to handle it on a case-by-case basis, but what we look for this to be is a refund of all taxpayers. Now, there, one other thing I just thought about that I better highlight. If you're a taxpayer that would typically pay us after you took the exemption of $50, $117, that's the credit you're getting. All the credit is earned and paid in 2020. So at the end of the day, if all the taxes you would pay the city is $117, after you took the $50 exemption, you're getting $117 back, not $250. Okay? So we want to be clear that that's, that's how the exemption works, is you add the exemption in, and then you as a business holder or business owner, you're only getting, you know, obviously, businesses that go above the threshold will get the full payment back, and businesses that are still below that threshold and may not use the full 300, they don't get a carryforward credit. This is a 2020 increase of the tax exemption for that tax year only. And then, of course, any business that's not filed by February 12 of '21 this year would not qualify. They're going to be also in that not qualified category. So certainly encourage everybody to get their tax returns filed, be it your last quarter or your annual, if that's how you file. Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Council, I feel that the business and community will sincerely appreciate that action. Okay, the next item is reappointment of Chris Neal to the Somersville Forestry Council for a three-year term expiring June 30 of 2023. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Recorders report.
Mayor, I have really one of the most important meetings we've had for quite some time, but on January 18th, we'll be having a planning and zoning meeting up here, and I just want to invite everybody out to watch that. We have Dr. Stow from WDU that has produced a video for this, this meeting. It's all the importance of our comprehensive plan, and I have watched it, it's quite, it's quite good, so I encourage everybody to either come or watch it, watch it on SCTV.
What time is that?
Yeah, six, yeah, six o'clock. Yeah. Six o'clock on the 18th, and it will be streamed on SCTV, so make sure to watch it. That's all I have.
Okay, good deal. Okay, I just have a few things I want to run down here. First of all, council, you may or may not have saw our advertisement in both local and state papers for an engineering firm, which is actually, the whole project will be a stormwater project on Kentucky Road. Some of you may or may not be aware of, we have serious flooding issues on that road every time we have any, any volume of water, rain at all. So in our partnership with Region Four, we're filing for some grant monies. Of course, we're also working hand in hand with the state, Steve Cole in Lewisburg. So the first part of this process is to select an engineer to come in and get some cost on the project, so we're in those initial stages. So the engineer selection committee for this stormwater project is going to be our city superintendent Jamie Corbin, our street department manager Gus Rader, and I've asked Councilman Chuck Shaw to set on that as well. And so the three of them will take, and all this is, is this is just, you're not qualifying by price or whatsoever or anything like that, it's just a process of selecting an engineer for the project. The next thing I'd like to give you information about is the Somersville City grants, you all should have had, did y'all get those on your place? Yeah. The Somersville City grant applications are available for the next fiscal year, and they're due back to the city by February 26th. And what I will say is that we're still in the earliest stages of budgeting, and so if you recall, last year, it was kind of at the end of the entire process and the assessment of where we're at with more details on the closing out of the prior fiscal year. So we still want to, we still want to lay that opportunity out there for people to apply, but I do think that it'll be another lengthy process before we award grants like it was last year until we have a total assessment on our financial position and what the correct amount is that we, that we put through that grant process. The other thing that I wanted to do, council, is I wanted to let you know that this year in particular, I was in receipt of a lot of correspondence. As a matter of fact, I wanted to file this letter down, let y'all see it real quick. I will, but I want to speak to it. But unlike any year before, it was, it was unbelievable, the number of folks, both in our community and outside of our community, that reached out to the city and thanking for the spirit of the Christmas holiday. And, you know, what's, what's, you know, what's really interesting about that is, is normally, we add, try to add every year, this year we didn't add a whole lot, but this year, I think, a lot of things that were noticed that have been there for some time, but, you know, it's just, it's indicative of the times, you know, exactly what we thought might happen this year, people get out and take in, they did, and boy, it was really appreciated. So constant comments back to the mayor, council, and the employees for all they do to beautify this city, especially through this last holiday season. The other thing that I want to share is, we got a letter from Dawn and Mary McKenzie, who live on Dominic Circle, and I let them know I was going to share this letter, and too often... too often, I think, people take for granted the deeds, the many good deeds of our city employees, and certainly, there are people that reach out and recognize them, but, you know, here's a letter that I received on Friday, December 11th, they go on to say that they arrived home to find water overflowing at their meter box, and, you know, and it was a big deal, and, you know, and then it goes on to say that, you know, this was at 4:00, at 4:30, the first city guy arrived to see what the problem was, and then, you know, after securing time, at 5:30, here shows up this whole crew and for hours works to repair, and of course, Chuck, that's right across from where you live.
Yeah.
And hours, you know, and, you know, that's the way they work, that's the job they do. And so I sent a card back at the mail, like I do all people, you know, thanking them for recognizing, but, you know, we are, as I mentioned in my letter, we are blessed with the workforce we have, the job they do, and their response to the needs of the very citizens that we all serve. And so, anyway, I'll, you guys can check out, y'all can check out that letter, but...
Not only did they fix the leak, but they brought a backhoe and leveled their yard out, brought up seed, paved it, and when they left there, it was like nobody been there, except you could see the hay.
And that's...
They did a great job.
Yep, yep. So, anyway, you know, every opportunity we can, I want to, you know, that's, you know, that's our city employees, you know, at the end of the day, there's a lot to be proud of in this city. We talked about the businesses, we talked about the citizens, but we are also blessed with a core of good, solid employees, so for that, we're grateful too. Okay, moving right along, are there any council comments or reports?
I do have a comment, you talk about the senior center. I'm a member of the senior center, and of course, like I say, they do most of all theirs on volunteer, and talking about if they want to make a donation, would be great if they want to, it's only costs $12 a year for a membership, which, you know, to get 100, that's $1,200 to help pay for, like you say, a light bill or anything, they can come eat, you know, for like a dollar a day, I think it's $2 now, so, whatever, but if I you on TV, I'd like for maybe people that wants to join, and I think it only happens to be like 50, I don't know if even that, but that would be a great way for a donation.
Good. Thank you, Gene. So you heard it, Councilman Underwood, a member of the Nicholas County Senior Center, solicits membership and donations. And I don't think you have to be a senior to make a donation, do you, Gene?
No.
Okay, any other council comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
First. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Counsel, thank you so much, have a good evening.